Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessing of living in a town that recognizes the importance of prayer and your presence and your wisdom in decision-making. Lord, tonight, we thank you for these who give of their time. We thank you for the staff of our city. We thank you, Father, for being able to call a place like Popper Bluff, Missouri, home, and we are so blessed by that. Thank you. Lord, I recognize in a special way tonight Councilman Crocker in the passing of his brother, and, Lord, I just pray that you would overwhelm him with your presence, with your power, with your peace, that you may comfort him, and, Lord, that that peace that passes all understanding would guard his heart and mind in Christ Jesus. Wrap your arms around his whole family. Be present in this place tonight. May the decisions that are made be pleasing to you and be good for our city, and we'll ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Real call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McFay.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Mayor pro Tim Crocker.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Here.
We do have five present in the quorum.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. None? Move on to consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
On the commotion, we approve the consented agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. On the workshop items, item eight, a representative from downtown Popper Bluff will appear before the city council to present their strategic plan.
Pam, do you need my name and address for the records?
Please.
Okay. Penny McGath, 501 Vine Street, Popper Bluff. Mayor DeGerris and council, members of the council, rephrase that. Good evening, and thank you for allowing downtown Popper Bluff to come tonight. Downtown was operating on a plan that's about 10 years old, and while that plan is still good, and we intend to operate off of that, we wanted to do an updated version of what the community wanted to see happening in downtown to help us move that strategic plan along a little bit better. So what we did in September is we had six community forum meetings. Anyone was able to come to those meetings, and we also did it live on Facebook, where they could give input on ideas or suggestions that they would like to see happen in downtown. We were very pleased with the turnout and the suggestions. In fact, we thought a lot of the suggestions were going to be costly, and, in fact, they're not. And Steve will go into more detail about the plan in here in just a minute. And I'm sure that you all know that I have tendered my resignation. I will be leaving downtown next month. I appreciate you extending the contract for the director each year that you have done it. I've really enjoyed it. I've met a lot of people, made amazing friendships and contacts along the way. I'm leaving on my own. I don't even know what the word is, but I'm leaving, and there's no ill will, no hard feelings about anything. I've got other opportunities I'm going to explore with my family, so I really appreciate everything that you've done and the participation that you guys have shown every step of the way, whether it was board meetings or the community input or meetings in the office, just working together. You guys have been great, and the board is interviewing a new director right now, and I'm sure that the transition will go smoothly, and that new person will take off running as they should. So, Steve, would you like to come up and talk about our plan?
Thanks, Penny. Steve Halter, 3194 Foxwood Bend. Appreciate you allowing me the hour to come speak to you tonight. About an hour? Thought I had an hour. I will say that I think the majority of the people in the audience tonight are from our downtown Popper Bluff board, so all these folks here, you see them, and there's a lot of other folks that have been at those meetings. So I do want to start off, before I get into this plan, and just say that in the honor of Thanksgiving this week, I am very thankful of what all of you do, and I don't say that enough, and I know you guys put a lot of time and a lot of time away from your family and most of you at a non-paid level, so I appreciate it, even the paid folks. You guys do your own job, too, so, but thank you. So I'm not, I know in your packet you received a copy of our finalized strategic plan, so I'm not going to read it word for word, but I do want to hit some of the highlights. And as Penny said, we spent a lot of time talking to a lot of different people. Between the social media interaction and the meetings here in this room, we had about 800 people that were involved in the process, and we were, I remember saying when we started this process, I said, "Man, if no one shows up, then we just need to roll everything up and pack it up and be done with downtown." So I was very pleasantly surprised to see so many people come out and give their input, and I really think every council person was at that meeting, and several of you were at a lot of those meetings. Dave, I know you're at a lot of those, more than one, and our city leadership, Dennis was there, Mark was there, and of course, thank you Lori, who's not here, but she spent a lot of after-hours doing, taking notes and stuff, so. But most importantly, I want to thank the citizens who came out and gave their input into this plan. And the plan, it's not a Steve plan, it's not a downtown Popper Bluff, Inc. plan, it's a community downtown plan, and, you know, there's things in here that, you know, there's a lot of good input from citizens. Not everything, obviously, can be put into place, but we think that the majority of what we heard over and over, we put into this plan and prioritized it. We also went along with the SMART principle, where everything we did, when we were looking at the things that we wanted to accomplish, we made sure that they were specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. So you'll see in this plan, I hope that you'll see, that, you know, we have how it's going to get done, when it's going to get done, for each point that we brought up. And we did focus on eight different priorities, and I'll just hit those real quick, and I just want to say a little bit about each one of them, and I'll try to keep it brief. Beautification and cleanliness, security and safety, code enforcement, having a main focal point to draw people downtown daily, events, the lovely parking garage, business development incentives, and then visiting successful downtown areas. So just to hit a few of the highlights on the beautification and cleanliness, we're going to add tin trashcans and take a total of 20 trashcans and powder coat them and put downtown Popper Bluff logo on them. We're going to light, already have lit up, thanks to Mary Ed DeGerris, the founder's bridge, once and working on it a second time. So, and I just, you know, it's sad that people, all I got to say is whoever took those lights, they needed them more than we did, so I hope it lights up their Christmas, lights up their house or whatever, and I hope that's sufficient so they don't have to come back for a second round. But thank you, and it looks great, and we've had a lot of compliments on that. And that was actually Brian White, who's the owner of the restaurant across from what's temporary City Hall, has actually came up with that idea. As most of you know, we already coordinated someone repainting mural, the All-America City mural down there. That looks great. It looks so much better than what it did before. The flags on Main Street, I think probably most of you have seen that. We've got some good press, thanks to the DAR on that. That was an idea from Sharon Kissinger, had also came up with the idea of having mules' flags and raiders' flags for when there's home games, so we're working on getting some of those flags. We've secured the mules' flags, and we're still working on the three rivers' flags, and we'll put those up on home games so that all of the Main Street. And that's just the start of it. We hope to expand that on to others. In the areas of safety and security, we've met the police department, and Penny and myself, and I don't remember who, Probation Pro met with the folks from S.A.T.O.P., and we feel like we're making some progress on cleaning up that corner, not letting those folks congregate. We're working on a spot for them to kind of go out behind the building so that when you drive by, you don't see, anytime you're in any area and you see a large gathering of people, doesn't matter who they are, it just doesn't make you feel easy about it, and if, you know, so it's kind of like a perception issue, so they're working with us on that. The police department's agreed to increase foot patrol downtown. We're real pleased with that. You've probably seen in the newspaper, we already added two security cameras, one on Broadway and one on Main. We decided to just keep, anything we could get done, just start doing it now instead of waiting to present this, so a lot of these things we've already, we've got the ball rolling, are already completed. We're recommending elimination of the one-way streets downtown. We did a survey of all the business owners and operators downtown, and 75% of them would like to see them eliminated. Some who aren't even always positive about everything down there, they thought that was a good move, so, and MoDOT said it was okay with them. We think that's something that will help the area down there, and we think it's something that's easily achievable. In the area of code enforcement, this could have easily been our number-one priority. This is the thing that we heard time and time again about dealing with disrepaired and dilapidated buildings. I'm very encouraged to see some of the recent articles in the newspaper about people that have either are doing something with their buildings or being forced to do something with their buildings. I know the one was on the front page a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, whenever it was. We do have a great ordinance, Endangerous Buildings Ordinance, Chapter 505, that you guys have approved. Dennis, I know a lot of his folks have worked hard on it. We would just encourage everyone to continue to work together to try to move forward with taking care of those buildings, and I know that our fire chief is really adamant about that as well, for the safety of his guys in case of a fire. You know, I think the article that was in the November 10th DAR where quoted some things from Emily Wolpers and Dennis Avery about dealing with those dangerous buildings, I think that's great, and we just need to move forward with it. And I also think that, you know, something you're going to be hearing from us on, we're still working on coming up with some suggestions on some type of a maintenance code for downtown, because as Dennis said, the dangerous building one doesn't really cover the ones as far as current maintenance. So we think that's a huge issue, and we just need everybody working together, and I'm glad to see some movement on that. We also recommend, and we've talked to the park department, we've talked to Mark about this, utilizing the lot across the road from the skate park as a parking and maybe some green space. We think that'll enhance that area, and also, it's tough to enforce two-hour parking if you don't have strategically placed public parking spaces that people actually use, which brings me to my next issue, and that's the current parking garage there. We're definitely recommending that something is done with that underutilized, how can I say it nicely, just underutilized building or structure or whatever. People, for whatever reason, maybe it's just a perception issue, but people don't want to park in there, and when we surveyed the business owners down there, once again, the same thing, it matched right up with the one-way streets, 75% of them said, "Get rid of it. We don't need it." I mean, if it was an open space, people would park there, but since it's so enclosed, people aren't parking in there. We also think that it would be good to increase the signage on the current public parking lot at the intersection of Fifth and Vine. It's a great lot, there's plenty of space there, but if you drive by it, a lot of people don't realize what it's for. There's a little sign on the road that maybe stencils in some big public parking signs that you can, it's visible from Pine Street when you go by. The main focal point to draw people downtown, we heard over and over again to have something down by the river that draws people to the river and also draws them in on a daily basis. We kicked around a lot of ideas, and what seemed to stick the best was a dog park, so it's gotten a lot of people excited. There's a lot of dog lovers in this town. I'm not one of them, but there's a lot of dog lovers in this town, and I know that Penny's working with some of them, they're planning a meeting. We're going to, we're recommending using the Wiseman Park, that flat green space that's right next to the basketball courts there, perfect size. We've done some research. We think downtown Popper Bluff can get together enough the money as an organization to fund it. We've got some lighting already. We know somebody whose husband's in the fencing business, Miranda, so we might be able to get a good deal there. I keep pressuring on that every time we talk about it. We'd like to start construction on June 1st of 2017. We are going to need some partners on in-kind from possibly the park department, obviously the city to allow us to use that space, maybe utilities if we have to move any utilities, I'm not sure, but that would just be in-kind, we wouldn't ask for any kind of money. We think we can handle that, we think we can get some grants for it, we think we can get some, do some fundraising for it, and then we've got some money set aside already that we think we can utilize for it. So we're really excited about that, because we think that if you can get people down there every day, then they start seeing some of the other things that are happening down there, and then the ball just keeps rolling. We're going to continue, as far as events, we're going to continue to take the lead on the annual Iron Horse Festival. I know there was some talk that we weren't going to anymore, but downtown Popper Bluff, Inc. will continue to do that. It's been a very successful event. Kudos to Penny and all those that are involved in it. I think that thing draws about 3,000 to 4,000 people when they have that event down to downtown. We'll also do some regular monthly events. We've got some plans for regular monthly events. Parking garage, we talked about. Business development incentives. Randy Stricker gave the suggestions during input meetings about creating a downtown TIF. We've talked to organizations like Mako who think that's very favorable. We've talked to different communities like Cape Girardeau, who's had a very successful revitalization of their downtown through using TIF. This, I know some people on the council and in the community, a few people get nervous when you talk about TIF, but, you know, it's all about how it's structured, and if it's structured to where the city, where the developer gets a portion of those payments through a pilot program, and then the community or the municipality gets a portion of those money for infrastructure improvements, it is allowable. It can also be done, there's a lot of different ways to pay for TIF projects, and we would be recommending the pay-as-you-go, so there's no out-of-money, no out-of-pocket money from the city upfront, so it's not going to be an undue burden on the budget, other than just paying for the actual TIF process, which we believe we can get done for less than $20,000. But those infrastructure improvements can help with things like removal of the parking garage, or even with the dog park, or public restrooms, I know that's been talked about by one individual in town, law enforcement improvements downtown, et cetera. All those things can be covered through the funds raised through the downtown TIF. Penny's also modeled a local grant program for our downtown business owners off of Paducah, Kentucky, where we can offer small grants to businesses who are looking to find ways to improve their facades, or their, or do painting, or lighting, or whatever, whatever for their business. It's not a lot of money, but it's a start. I think what was Penny, like $1,000 was our max on some of those? Yeah. So that's something that we think will be favorable, all in the area of business development incentives. And several people throughout the meetings had mentioned us visiting other successful downtowns, and Penny has been to those downtowns, she's made those phone calls, and that's where we got a lot of these ideas for what we're doing on our strategic plans. So we're excited about it, we have a lot of, we feel like we have a lot of momentum. It is definitely a group effort. Our boards worked a lot of different, a lot of hard hours, a lot of off, you know, subcommittees or whatever, putting all this stuff together. It's not a perfect plan, but we think it's a doable plan, and I think, as Penny said, it's not, we're not asking for a ton of money, we're asking for just a small investment from the city, and we're willing to put in a lot of the legwork and ask people for money for some of the things that we want to do as well. We're all in this together, and it's, to me, it's been an eye-opening experience, seeing all the different entities work together, and it's really exciting to me, and I know that people have talked about throughout the years doing something about downtown, and, you know, I've had the naysayers say, "It's never going to happen, it's never going to happen," and, you know, I just say, "You know, you never get to the top of the hill if you don't take the first step," and I think we've taken not just one step, but two or three steps. So thanks for your time and consideration. I'll answer any questions if anybody has a question about the plan, or I'll turn it over to Miranda or Randy and let them answer it.
Steve?
Yes.
I have gotten several phone calls about your new slogan. You want to address that?
Yeah, I do want to address it. First thing is, I don't want that to overshadow, we talked about for some of the events, we looked for a catchy way to drive people downtown, and one of the things we heard is we had to figure out a way to get younger people downtown. And so a lot of people we talked to, and some younger people in general, were kind of, or specifically, were kind of saying, "What do you think?" And we bounced around a lot of different ideas, and the other thing we heard was have your events in a consistent timeframe every month. So if it's the third Thursday or whatever, well, we decided to have it the first weekend of every month, and the young people we talked to said, came up with the first freaking weekend, and it just caught on, people liked it. Obviously, there is a little bit of, you know, some people that are older may not like it, some people, you know, for whatever reason, don't like it. I know that there's a letter being distributed about what it actually means, what freaking means. I think maybe it just means whatever people in their head want to make it mean. I know that there's someone who was quoting what's in the dictionary I have right here, right from their website, what's in the dictionary, and it's used to make an angry statement more forceful. I don't know that there's, I know that, what I love about it is it was meant as a, kind of as a marketing slogan to get people excited about coming to events downtown, and everybody's still talking about it, all these wonderful things, that's all they're talking about, if they're talking about it at all. So I guess it's working, but, you know, there's a lot of successful marketing campaigns that are out there that you could read into it however you wanted to read into it. I mean, I could name just a few, like, I mean, I think everybody probably remembers the, Kmart had their slogan, "Ship my pants." Ship my pants. I mean, that's funny, catchy, now does anyone, I mean, you know, some people may be offended by it or whatever. There was one that was going around, quit elfing around. I think, I mean, there's, you know, I know one of our local successful businesses that just opened up lists on their, in their restaurant, they list on their, on their sign out front something about food and whatever, and it says libations, and I still see people going there all the time, but if you look up the true meaning of libations, does anyone know what the true meaning of libations is? If you look it up in the dictionary, it's drink poured out as an offering to deity. Now, no one's in there probably pouring their drinks out and offering to deity, but it's just, it's just marketing, it's just getting people talking, getting people excited about it or whatever. So I, we had a vote on our board, we disagreed on our board, and we voted, a majority of our board members thought it was okay to go with, so that's all I can say about that. But I really, it's such a small part of the plan, and I'd hate for anyone to, that's what they take away from this, all this work that was put into it.
Well, I've had multiple phone calls and letters, and even since I've been here in the building tonight on my text phone, not one person was in support of it. They felt it was derogatory and not something that would be appropriate for downtown. It might be appropriate for a private enterprise, but it is not appropriate for downtown. Yes, they're talking about it, but I'm not sure it's in a positive way.
Yeah.
I mean, like, your Cruisin' Fridays was great, you had that consistent, it went, you know, through the summer, people look forward to it, you know, so I understand the concept, but possibly they could rethink about what the slogan is?
Sure. I mean, we're open to suggestions. Somebody suggested make it first family weekend or something, but not every event down there is going to be for families, so.
And not everyone has a family, so, I mean, why not just first Fridays? I mean, because we don't want to take yours?
Well, I just don't know that all of our events can be on a Friday.
They're not Friday.
Oh, they're not all on Fridays? Okay.
Yeah. I just think that, you know, there's a lot of things that could be offended, could, people could see as offensive.
So if they're not all on...
I don't know that the majority of the people in Popper Bluff would...
If they're not all on Friday, then the other days of the week, are you going to give them catchy slogans also? Because I understood that it was, your purpose was to have it consistent, like on the same Friday or the same weekend.
First weekend.
First weekend, but not necessarily on Friday, so it could be Saturday or Sunday. Okay.
Yeah. But we surely don't want anyone to hold up, signing off on a really good plan over something that's that small of the, of the part of the plan. I mean, we're talking about buildings falling down, and then some people want to make an issue out of, you know, a slogan that some people say may be offensive and some people don't, but, yeah, we're open to whatever, if, and if, what's funny about when you do something like this is those people that sometimes are negative about those, sometimes, they don't have the suggestions, or they're not there showing up at the meetings to give their suggestions, but we're open to it, that's for sure. And we definitely don't want it to hold up progress in downtown over one little slogan.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a concern.
Yes.
How long has Broadway been one-way? Ever since I can remember?
Yeah.
And the fire chief has expressed concern about it being too-traffic for the fire trucks. To me personally, it could be two-way. But when the fire chief tells us that it may delay them getting out of the fire department building, maybe late getting to the fire at somebody's house or business, I have a concern there about making that...
Yeah. I wonder how they handle that in other communities where there's, I mean, two-way streets for the fire. We talked to the police department, and they were fine with it.
Did you talk to the fire department?
Yeah, oh, yeah, Ralph was at our meetings, yeah.
What did he say?
He didn't like it, but he really didn't have, most of the people I spoke to didn't really, I don't want to say anything bad about Ralph, because I think a lot of him, but, I mean...
That's my concern, if he has a problem with it, you know, and think it's going to delay.
Yeah, but I, but I also think you got to weigh in everybody, and if you have 75% of the businesses that are down there that...
Well, see, some of the business owners I've talked to, when they heard what Ralph said, said, "Well, you know, I'll rethink that."
Yeah.
And I didn't talk to 70, I didn't talk to all of them. I won't say that.
Yeah. We did, we had everybody go around, actually, face-to-face, it wasn't a survey where we pass it out, to people that actually went into each one of those businesses. So, I mean, I respect Ralph's opinion on it, but...
What is the traffic based on Broadway compared to our other city? Fire stations that have both ways?
I'd have to think it'd be a lot less.
That's what I, I mean, I have no idea, so...
Well, and that's, that's just a concern, I'm just...
Right, and I appreciate that, and I hear Ralph, and I would never say anything, I mean, Ralph's a great guy, he's a great fire chief, but I, you know, I just disagree with him on this, and I think most, most people that I've talked to do. I mean, to me, when the lights come on, I'm just like, you're supposed to pull over anyway, regardless if it's one-way or two-way, I mean, I do, I think it's the law, isn't it?
It's the law. I agree, it's very narrow. My concern is like when the trucks, the delivery trucks, you know, they just stop in the middle of the street, and if you've got a two-way, a fire truck trying to get out, and a truck stopping there doing deliveries, it could really be dangerous.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there's deliveries all over town that are two-way.
But it's just more narrow on these streets downtown.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we could definitely look at delivery hours for trucks, you know, on the, instead of a parking space and say, from nine to, I mean, most of the deliveries are early in the morning anyway, so we just have to make sure we don't have fires during that time. But like, you know, seven to nine a.m. deliveries, parking or whatever, I think early morning when those deliveries are going on, there's enough space down there for them to...
It's just like the big beer trucks and the big Coca-Cola trucks and soda trucks, you know, I mean, that's the ones that are really, the ones that really block the traffic the most.
And I think it was said best by, I've heard it several times, "Y'all chime in whatever you want." I feel like I duck out of a pond here now. But, you know, the thing is, it would be so easy, if it doesn't work out, give it some actual time to try to work out, but if it doesn't work out, how hard would it be to go back? I don't personally think we'd ever need to go back, but I think you should give it a try.
When we talked to the police department and the fire department, their main concern was the time span of an event at Coliseum when they were letting out.
Yeah.
That's when they were worried about it. That's really the only time they were worried about it.
If there's a delivery on Broadway, you know, for instance, at Jim and Jerry's, well, if it's two-way, then the fire trucks can go the opposite direction.
They go the right way.
Or go straight toward the Coliseum. They would, they would have two alternate ways to get out of that firehouse in the event of, you know, of an emergency, too, rather than just going one-way like it is now past that delivery truck.
But Steve just now hit it on the head. This isn't something we're going to put a ring on anybody's finger. We'd like to try it, and that way the people are trying to make their living downtown. If it helps them, great. If it becomes a problem, it can't cost the park anything to go back the way it is. We don't have to keep it like that. But let's try it.
I'd ask that everyone that's got to speak could come up to the podium so we can pick them up on the recording.
Sorry.
Pardon me?
Randy Persons, 5570 County Road, 450. Like Steve says, we're not marrying this issue, and it's not us that want it, it's the people that live in...
It's the people that live and, and more importantly, work downtown that want to try it. So, at least give it a try, I think. And if it doesn't work, or it causes everybody heartburn, go back. It's not a big money issue at all, if any. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, and one thing I thought about, and I respect Ralph and his opinion, too, but, you know, right now, if the fire, they have a fire, once they come out of that station, they can only go in one direction. I mean, if there's a fire south, they'd be able to come out and go south now, which, right now, they can't do that.
Right. Right. Well, I, that's one of those things I came back to, it just seemed like an easy, I mean, at least show us an easy action item that may improve things down there. And I know we have one individual who's a business owner down there who's, can potentially be very negative at times. And this individual said, "You know what? I need to stop thinking like this and really open up and give it a shot." And that person said, "Let's give it a shot, see what happens." A person also said, "They go the wrong way anyway, if they want to go the way they want to go."
That is true.
This way, maybe this half of them will be legal now, or whatever.
I'm just thinking about insurance racks.
Anyway, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
I'd like to thank the downtown group. They did a lot of work on this. A lot of positive things came from it, and different ideas from people that, you know, had never come to a downtown meeting. And Penny, you've been great to work with since you've been here. We'll miss you, and we expect you to keep coming around. There's no action needed on this, this item at this time, so we'll move on to item B, if no one has anything else to say. Item B, the City Council review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board requesting the mayor to execute a social economic letter pertaining to the anti-degradation review of the wastewater treatment facility. Mr. Box?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the hour for me to talk. This letter is part of the Water Quality Assessment Report, or WQAR. The primary purpose of the WQAR is to fill the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, and also Missouri Department of Natural Resources. They request the letter from the mayor to confirm the socioeconomic importance to the project. If you actually look at the letter, there was really three items that we addressed: the median household income for the city, the population, what is done in the last 16 years, and in the employment rate. And really, what the letter, the very last sentence says at all, "City of Popper Bluff is agreeable with the proposed degradation report in order to maintain our current social and economic conditions. So, we're trying to maintain the project as a cheapest cost as we can." This was discussed at an earlier advisory board meeting, and would recommend the mayor to sign the letter. If there's any questions, be happy to answer.
When does this have to begin? Or when is that?
Soon as possible. Yep, this is the last thing for us to turn in the report. I believe, I thought what we were going to do was a roll call to just have it approved, correct, for you to sign?
No.
It's a motion, a second.
Just, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, City Council will discuss a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages in the C2 General Commercial District for property located 2205 Northwestwood Boulevard, Popper Bluff, Missouri. The applicant is DND Pizza Incorporated, 318 East Main Street, Jackson, Missouri. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There has been a request for a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of not, of food and non-alcoholic beverages. This is at the former site of Will Miller's Flowers on Westwood. It is Zone C2. It is at 2205 Northwestwood. The applicant at this point is DND Pizza Incorporated of Jackson, Missouri. There was a vacant building there. It's no longer there. They are prepping the site for construction pursuant to the approval of this request. Surrounding land used to the north, southeast, and west is C2 General Commercial. Propelled drive-through route would be on the north to the south side of the existing building, and can be accessed from Northwestwood. The entrances onto the highway would not be changed, and the applicant can provide adequate traffic stacking on-site. There were no concerns or issues when it went through the planning and zoning process. And planning, the planning department and the zoning commission did recommend approval of this with the following stipulations. One, that no alcoholic beverages are to be served through the window, as is the normal process. And the conditional use permit would go with the business owner. And if the business owner changed, they would have to come back and request another one. Any questions for me? Thank you.
No questions, then entertain a motion, a second, to move this to the voting session to be held December 5th.
I'll make a motion, we send this to voting session on December 5th.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will discuss a repealing ordinance number 5723 relative to the vacation of Seventh Street and certain alleyways adjacent to lots one and five of Abington's addition, located between US Highway 60 and Lester Street.
Yes, back in 1994, a portion of Seventh Street between Pine and Lester was vacated at the request of the owners of the hospital at that time. Of course, the hospital's no longer operating there. I know they have plans of hopefully demolishing that building and doing something with that site. There's really no need for them to have that vacation. Also, city attorneys talked to the county assessor, and I'll just kind of let him address the legal situation of it.
Yes, this section of Seventh Street between Pine and Lester Street was vacated by ordinance in 1994, some 22 years ago. It was based, predicated upon representations from the then-operating doctor's hospital that the master plan that they had involved building over and upon Seventh Street over to the old Dr. De Siro building. And the need to close the street was, was based upon that. Based upon those representations that were made, and the promise that those construction plans were imminent, the city did, by ordinance, vacate that street. That abandoning ordinance was never recorded. No maintenance or responsibility for the street was ever taken over by that hospital. And the city, de facto, continued to operate it as a public street, and it has never been closed even temporarily as a public street. Since that time, as you know, the hospital sold, and sold again, and sold again, and ultimately is now owned by the corporate parents of Popper Bluff Regional Medical Center. I have spoken with the COO of Popper Bluff Regional, Mr. Buddy Daniels, and as well as, I think, Councilwoman McVeigh has talked to him. The local administration expresses no concern, no objection to it. However, as big corporations go, they wanted to send this to their corporate offices in Tennessee and let their legal department look at it. And out of deference to them, even though it's my opinion that we don't need their permission to do it, as good citizens in the community, corporate citizens, we, we want to give them an opportunity to review it. And hopefully, they'll, when corporate looks at it, and the attorneys down in Tennessee look at it, that they'll agree with that. And so, we place this on the agenda tonight, just as a workshop item. And I believe from talking to Mr. Daniels, that by the time we get to our December meeting, we'll probably have some consent. However, want to emphasize that we don't need their consent. This is sort of an accommodation to them, that we are not actually taking action on it tonight. Their plans are still, as you all know, to try to sell or donate all of that property. And that includes the property that is on the west, northwest corner of Seventh and Pine Street, as well as the entire campus that is between Seventh Street and Sixth Street, not all the way to Lester Street, but down to the current Nyberg Clinic. As you know, Nyberg Clinic was purchased and is now owned by San Francis Medical Center. So, this is, affects a part of the street that was never abandoned in favor of the then-Nyberg Clinic, or the current San Francis Medical Center. But it, it does affect the street along that, along that entire area from Lester Street, Pine Street. So, the recommendation from staff is to repeal the 1994 ordinance, which will in effect preserve that as a public street.
Want to have any questions? I'll entertain a motion, a second, to move this to the voting session to be held December 5th.
Make a motion, we move this to the voting session on December, what, 5th?
5th.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the action required items, Bill number 7957, the City Council will take action on ordinance adopting guidelines for the K-Porter Fire and Police Benefits Fund.
I'll make a mo, first reading, as in comply, I can't think of the word.
Caption.
Caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance adopting guidelines for the K-Porter Police and Firefighters Benefit Fund.
Move for second reading of Bill number 7957, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance adopting guidelines for the K-Porter Police and Firefighters Benefit Fund.
Move for adoption of Bill number 7957.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7957 is passed. Bill number 7958, the City Council will take action on ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records from the city manager and city clerk's offices.
Move for first reading, Bill number 7958, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records from the city manager and the city clerk's office.
Make a motion for the second reading of 7958, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records from the city manager and the city clerk's office.
Move for adoption of Bill number 7958.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7958 is passed. And now to the city manager's report.
I'll just let the council know, I guess I've spent more time on this budget than I have any we've done. I kind of communicated with you all some of the things I was looking at to try to balance this budget. And I keep looking and looking and looking. And our sales tax reports come in on the seventh day of the month. I really wanted to get the council the budget on the 5th. I would really like to have that last sales tax report, because it could make a big difference, good or bad, either way it goes. Just trying to look at the calendar. Maybe we had a special meeting the following week to discuss budget. But then if we vote on it on the 19th, that only gives you a week between workshopping and voting. I hate to ask you all to have two special meetings in one month. Just kind of asking your thoughts on the meetings.
Well, the budget's so important, I don't see any problem with having a special meeting and giving you the extra time, so you can have all the figures.
What dates would those be? Excuse me?
Really not sure tonight, but I can, by next week, could come up with some dates.
Sorry.
P and Z on the 12th? And you do have a meeting?
Yes, we will have items.
So, we could have a special meeting on the 13th to workshop the budget?
Would later in the week, like, on Thursday or Friday, be difficult?
Whatever.
I mean, not have it on Monday, the 5th, and just slide it to Thursday? Would that give you enough time? Have it Thursday evening, or Friday noon, or something?
Yeah, I mean, I could have all the figures plugged in, except for the sales tax, which by then I will have that.
I was just looking at, there's a couple of days past the 7th, and it may crowd you too much, I'm not sure.
And I guess it depends a lot on whether you all want the budget a few days ahead of time before we discuss it, it's discussed at the meeting, or if I could hand it out that night and go over the budget. And then you would have a cup, almost a couple of weeks to ask any questions, or, you know, meet with me. Like I said, I hate to ask this, but this is the worst budget I've worked on, and I'm trying not to make any cuts that we don't have to, but.
I'd like to have a chance to look at it before, just see how everything's going on it, and ask you some questions.
I agree with that. I like having time to look at it, opposed to just receiving it that night.
Right, I agree, yes.
I'd rather have special meetings than short time to look at the budget.
I, I think so, too.
Look at the calendar and go over files, but-
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, you know, this is probably the most important decision that's made all year long, so.
Exactly.
And I guess, depending on our questions, if we do it on the 13th, and we receive it maybe on that Friday, the 9th, then either we can follow through with it on the 19th, if we feel comfortable. If not, then just do another special meeting right before the end of the year.
Right. Yeah, just, it just needs to be passed before the end of the year, so.
I mean, we've had special meetings on the 20th and 21st.
Right.